Okay, gentlemen, I am making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, being Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule in the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2019, and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall, and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Star Ledger, and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Please rise, the presentations.
I present the allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sarno.
Here.
Mr. Shilke.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Gomaldi.
Here.
Mr. Pantina.
Here.
Mr. Mazzio, Mr. Keen, Mr. Ladavi.
No, I'm here.
Corrella.
Here, no, he's here.
He's here.
I'm just gonna ask him for the first step.
Oh, okay.
Easy here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion to adjourn the May 9th minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladavi. All in favor?
Aye.
Any communications?
Yes, we have a resignation letter from Mr. Capari, received on June 8th, resigning from the Planning Board.
Okay.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately. Thank you. Seeing no resolutions, any... Were you gonna just say something? Do we have any other business to discuss? I don't think so, seeing none. We're gonna move right into the business, okay? Okay. Application, 319 variance Raymond Faschino Jr., 230 North 21st Street, Block 42, Lot 8. Does anyone here for that?
Yes, sir.
What is Chairman Holland's position on that in person, please?
Okay. Mr. Mazzio has accused himself of...
How do we stand in terms of there is some application? Come back.
Yes.
Did you... You are Robert Coleman, architect? Okay, could you both raise your right hands, please? With regard to this application, do you swear that testimony you should give shall be the truth?
I do.
Okay, one at a time, if you take you, sir. State your name, say your last name, please.
My name is Raymond Faschino. F as in Frank, U as in Sam, C-H-I-N-O. Resigning 230 North 21st Street, Kenilworth, New Jersey, 0703.
You're the applicant, and you are the owner of the property.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And can you state your name, say your last name, please?
Robert, last name is Coleman, C-O-L-E-M-A-N. And my office is 1370 Valley Road in Sterling.
And you're an architect?
Yes.
Could you tell the board a little bit about your background, where you've testified to, just so... Unless the board's aware of Mr. Coleman's qualifications?
I don't have any.
Okay, just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, I got a college degree in architecture from Miami University in Oxford, Ohio. I worked in my apprenticeship for Chagotis in Springfield when he was there, and then later on for Ritchie Potter in Union. I've appeared in four boards in Elizabeth, Jersey City, Calhoun, Sun, Hurky Heights, Long Hill, Panshup.
Chairman, I've worked with Mr. Coleman in other communities, and his credentials have always been accepted by the boards. I presume he has active likes of Southern property.
Okay, we can proceed. Thank you. Tell us which one, call it, probably. Okay. Raymond or Mr. Faschino?
Ray is good, sir.
Okay, Ray. Okay. Does anyone know why you're here?
I'm a member of the board. I do apologize for my appearance, I'm back and forth with the scouts tonight, so colors and all that stuff, so I do apologize, trying to be present. I'm here because I have a three-bedroom house residing on 21st Street. I have four children, and my father has dementia, he lives down Hal. I'm planning on moving him up with us, and we're just inadequate with room inside our house, three bedrooms, so everyone's pretty much on top of each other. And I'm here for you instead of having a second divorce, I kinda wanna give us a little bit more space.
This looks much cheaper. Okay. It's minor subdivision.
It's no...
I'm sorry.
Just tell us, you're gonna build a second, you're proposing a second floor over the existing? Do you have a cantilever out?
If you guys, gentlemen, if you don't mind, I'm good, I mean, I'm a police officer, I'm good with firearm handcuffs. I kinda bought Bob alarm, which means I know who has wounds.
Is this what we have?
It's regular.
Okay, we don't need to mark it, no?
Our existing footprint is...
Ray, please step aside. Also, if I could ask Chris and Kevin to stand with their right hand, just with regard to this application and this other application that's on this evening, do you see your testimony show me the truth?
Aye, aye.
That's our board planner and our board engineer. Okay.
Existing footprint is this.
Hey, Bob. Excuse me, sorry, guys. Can you bring that to Mr. Coleman? Thank you, Bob.
Hey, just clip it up, sir, so we can... Yeah, yeah, there's a clip there for you. Very good. There you go. Okay, now.
Now we get started.
Okay, the existing house footprint is this corner, back to this corner, back to this corner here, and then around the garage and back. This garage is existing, sticks out about four feet past the existing house. And what he proposes to do is to add over this area here, between the cantilever out the rear two feet, and he wants to add a family room in the back. And I could cover a porch here even with this, the garage, and I'll show you the front in a minute, so it gives an aesthetic street appeal, because it is close to the road. That is one of the variances we need. If you look at my, the first sheet, I think I have a survey on there. The existing 25-foot front yard would be approximately back to the middle of these rooms. So we're not, not in the neighborhood of being a remaining. And we are again, that typical Kenilworth shortfall in the side yard, which always seems to be about two or three or four inches. I think we oughta laid out a lot of Kenilworth houses that paint measure was a little short, because they're always...
Don't say that, my father did always.
So we're leaving, we're extending the existing kitchen back into the family room, putting a little office, computer area for Ray and his kids. And then this area, which is a bedroom now, we're gonna keep as a bedroom on the first floor, try to zoom in for my, for my parents. For the parents, so they don't have to go up and downstairs. And then you'll keep the dining room, so it's typical in a lot of houses, not going anymore. Kitchen, family room, dining room. And upstairs, so that's one bedroom down here. And upstairs, because we have that garage that sticks out, I'm putting a bedroom over that, and four other bedrooms, so we're gonna end up with the four bedrooms for the kids, an extra bedroom for Ray and his wife, and a bedroom downstairs for his parents. They're small, but he's got all he needs for his family in this layout. And part of the reason we needed a variance is I'm gonna put this side wall over that side wall that's, those couple inches short, because I feel that structurally it's better to have one wall over the other wall for bearing and weight-bearing purposes, and it looks, looks like the house was intended to be that way, instead of having that little offset piece flashing or two-thirds of the length of the roofing or whatever they end up doing.
So that's your only alteration, would you recall disturbing the footprint?
Well, the only disturbing the footprint we did, we added a front alteration, and then the...
Addition of the...
The family room out the back.
Besides, there's the obvious additions.
Yes.
The front porch, if I look at this, you're just kinda squaring that off, right? There's already, there's already a stoop and some steps.
Yeah, there is a stupid step. Like I said, my, my parents are older, and they kinda want, they, they're big front porch people down in South Jersey, and it's more, pretty much for them. My father is south, and not bother me.
But it's a porch, a stoop. We always always said stoop. Right? Four Jersey City, always said stoop.
Yeah, it's just square off at the end of the garage. So it's only like four feet deep, so it's not like we can put six chairs and a table out there. You got a couple of chairs next to each other, you know, the hanging flower pot, that kind of things.
Mr. Coleman, as I understand it, no, that there are existing dimensional deficiencies in the front yard and the side yard.
Yes.
From what I understand, they're not being worsened. They're not, they're being extended a little bit, but not being...
Right.
Worsened.
Correct.
That's it.
And this is the front of the house here. I ran the front porch a straight roof with a couple of gables to break up the front massing.
What's the height on?
It's 28 feet under gray for the roof.
Top of the...
On the second floor, yes. And then the garage will just stay unchanged, a one-car garage right where it is. And this is the, the family room extension out the back with the slider and, and wood deck. So basically, it ends up looking like a two-stores, two-story center wall colonial house.
That's about it?
That's about it, it's pretty straightforward and simple.
I had a couple of questions in my report, Mr. Coleman, such as, what are the colors and what does this sign?
We're going to use all different colors, like gray or tan siding, probably maybe a wood blend look on the roof for what they call a slate blend, a GAF, which has a bluish gray space. The wood blend is like tans and browns listed, and I have a slate blend in my house, and it's holding up very nice in the wood split.
And what's the composition of the proposed materials?
Uh, there would be dimensional roof shingles, you know, so they're varied, they're not just straight free packs. And the siding would be, would be vinyl siding with the wood grain embossed.
Does that mean the whole house or just the additions?
They have to be siding, the whole house.
Yeah, so the whole, good. The whole house would be vinyl siding?
Right. That way, you get all the colors to match, and when they fade, they fade altogether, instead of seven years apart.
Is the entire front and side of the house in vinyl? I couldn't quite...
No, there's gonna be stone at the bottom part.
We're gonna put a stone right underneath some windows here, the cultured stone.
Okay.
And again, that'll be the earth tone colors, the grays, the browns, fieldstone kind of color.
Okay.
Several houses on my block have the similar, similar, so I kinda wanna keep with the form of everybody else.
So in your, Raymond's opinion, if the board proves this, the house, your house would remain consistent with other houses in the neighborhood, it wouldn't stand ass?
No, sir, it would not. It would move forward with everybody else. The opposite, actually, I think my house is probably up in the forearm street, so it was canceled. And 21st Street is a cut through, so a lot of people come by, just so I kinda want to represent Kenilworth a little bit more than what I'm doing right now, but...
Right. Yeah.
Well, that's correct.
That's it, Chairman, thank you very much.
Chris?
Um, just, uh, two comments. The first one, you are increasing the amount of impervious for the site.
Yes.
Almost 700, 691 square feet, as it says on your plan. With, we, we've been getting complaints almost weekly now with people like building, increasing footprint, increasing...
Run off.
Run off.
Yeah, I was talking to the owner before the meeting, if we need to, I'll put a small bit. Most of the areas in the back, with the family room, I can put small drywall back there if I need to, and collect the water out of, off the family room roof.
That's fine. And how much water is it gonna accumulate there? I mean, really?
Well, it's just, it's, it's always gonna be one house, then another house, then another house.
The problem with the backyard is the water generally doesn't go anywhere, because it doesn't have a stream to flow into, and it just sits.
Perfectly.
Probably, probably by my understanding, um, it's also an open lot. The owners live next door to the open lot, and I, from what I'm understood, is it's gonna be not used as a building, it's gonna be used as more of a recreational area for the house next door. So I'm not gonna be really treating with anybody behind me, because once again, it's an open lot, so I don't have to worry about residents behind me complaining or anything like that. I do have a good rapport with most of our residents around.
Impervious coverage here in Kenilworth is a soft subject, because we have nowhere for the water to go, as we all know every time there is. But I think if we, um, I'm just making statements now, but go ahead, go ahead.
And the retention...
Well, I mean, to me, it seems like he's willing to do, do a basis, I don't know what cost is.
We're gonna require retention on additions now, so...
Yeah, so...
I have, I have creatures on, pre- on drywalls that I've done before, that was whatever the one that works, this details on already.
Good, okay.
You work it out with the engineering.
Right.
And the only other comment is, um, filing for a grading permit, uh, as far as...
That's, right.
And that's all I have.
Okay. And I would ask, how far, do the stairs come out, how many stairs, steps are coming off the porch? And how much is that coming out of the porch in the porch?
The garage isn't including the porch itself. It's gonna be, it's gonna be level with the, with the garage. The garage, like Bob said, it sticks out about four feet.
Okay, so it's not, the stairs are not gonna extend past the garage?
Nothing will extend past the garage.
These steps, well, these steps here will.
Right.
Step off, but the porch is not.
I understand that, I'm just concerned about the steps, it's not...
The calculation is from the front of the structure, so the steps do not count towards the setback. Everybody steps, steps, except for...
Anybody else have anything? Yes. No? See anyone else? Okay. Okay. Um, I'm sorry. I think we're gonna open it up, is that your, your full?
I have nothing.
You have nothing more, correct?
Yes, I don't.
Unless there's more? Okay, we're gonna...
I make a motion to open this application hearing to the public.
I'll second.
Made by the application, made, yeah, the motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Pantina, all in favor?
No.
Um...
It's a lot of...
It's a very strange... All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public we should speak on this matter and this matter only? Seeing none?
I make a motion to close the hearing to the public.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Gomaldi, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We heard your testimony. Any, any comments from the board here? Anybody would like to discuss this?
Yes.
May I suggest if I may, Mr. Chairman, that one condition be attached to the resolution that the storm...
Drywall.
...tension...
Seepage.
Seepage could be subject to review by the board engineer.
Right. Okay. Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
With those conditions in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
I second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Gomaldi, seconded by Mr. Pantina. Roll call, please.
Can we review the recommendation, or the...
Oh, I thought you just did.
It was just the one, right?
Yeah, it was the one.
I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, yeah, that's it, the drywall. Okay.
Mr. Sarno.
Yes.
Mr. Shilke.
Yes.
Mr. David.
Yes.
And Mr. Gomaldi.
Yes.
Mr. Pantina.
Yes.
Mr. Ladavi.
Yes.
Mr. Corrella.
Yes.
And Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Very good. Congratulations. Clean it up, Ray, I don't wanna see you at the door. Listen, I think it's not my stoop. I chose my stoop every day, I still can't get grass to grow, that's why I call my father. Yeah, I agree with you.
See, the steps are really generic, I got my husband's done this board, he goes, "These steps are at the side."
Okay. We're getting set up here for application 1802, minor subdivision, FDV Realty, 61 Locust Drive, Block 96, Lot 16. Okay.
How you doing, Mr. Chairman?
How are you?
Good, great, I'm just a board.
It has been a while, welcome back.
For the record, I'll be Fraser Jr., product Fraser in Tuller Street, Parkview, Jersey, representing FDV Real LLC, uh, the owners, or the owner, I should say, of this property, which is a fully conforming two-lot subdivision. I emphasize it's fully conforming subdivision as of right. Little weird, uh, part, though, of the parcel that I know we picked up in the comments, and maybe there's a bit of explanation, which I'm about to get. Some of the members of the board may recall that approximately three, three and a half years ago, we were here on another application for this same parcel. But there was, at that time, it was not fully conformant, specifically in 97 and a half foot wide, whereas you need 100 foot wide, now it's only conforming subdivisions, it's pretty two or rectangular blocks of 50 by 100 each.
Sorry, sir.
After you.
You're right.
Okay. So anyway, that we came down that evening with what would have been a variance requiring, a two and a half foot non-conforming on the left of the two parcels. We took the temperature of the room that evening, and we made a decision not to proceed with the application, because we felt that as a non-conforming application requiring a variance, we were unlikely to get. So my client went back to the proverbial and literal drawing board, and my client purchased from the town a sliver of property on the left side of this parcel to fill in, for lack of a better term, the left rectangle to make them both fully conforming lots.
Alongside the creek.
Alongside the creek, yes, so that would be the left side, as if, uh, contiguous to the creek.
Correct.
My client was pro se in the transaction with the town. Uh, Mr. Fucker represented the town. Without realizing it, at least without my client fully understanding it, instead of just the town conveying to him that little sliver that is necessary to make that left lot rectangular, the town apparently also owned the continuation of that little sliver that went next to the lot behind the left lots. And my client didn't understand that he was getting a deed, not just for the little sliver that he needed, but for the little sliver next to the rear yard neighbor. So now, my client's property has what I call the tail. Problem, I should say problem, the question is what does one do with that tail?
After one loss.
The most logical answer is a going to work. Most logical answer is that that tail should be conveyed for no consideration, it should be given to the rear yard neighbor. It does two pretty good things. Number one, squares off my client's lot, and there's no kind of issue of who's gonna get back there and take care of it for the sliver. And the other thing it does is it makes that rear yard neighbor's lot fully conformant, because right now, he's a few feet short. So we offered. And I guess they said that they offered the crown to Caesar three times, but we repeatedly offered this, uh, to the rear yard neighbor who's not interested. Does it want it, even though it would make his property conformant? I can't make it, make it. And so, what am I left with being able to do? I could subdivide off that little sliver, but if I do that, I orphan it. What is, no one's ever gonna be able to get to it, because it's just this little dinky sliver behind us, next to the rear yard property. The other thing I guess we could do, and this is the way the application is drawn, although the applicant is at the board's pleasure as to what the board wants us to do, the other choice is that the tail has to remain attached to the left of the two lots. That's how the application sits before you today. The right of the two parcels proposed to be created is a normal rectangle. The left is a normal rectangle with little dinky tail in the back.
Mr. Fraser, what is the depth of the neighbor's lot that you said is not conformant?
I believe it's 100, probably with, Mr. Chairman, not, not, not the, as you're looking at nature.
The width, the width is not good, so the width is 47.
There we go, if I ask. Here's my client, my client's property, okay? Here, this part here, remind you, last sort, this is the tail we need. And then there's a sliver up here that's next to this gentleman's lot, Lot 1.02.
Okay.
Lot 1.02 is, uh, just about 100 feet in depth, but he's just a stish, that's how they would term it, a little bit short in the width in the rear of his property. Seems to me, if at some point in the future, anybody wanted to ever do anything with that lot, it would require a variance. If the gentleman were to accept the gift of the sliver, and that was a conforming lot, but I can't make it. So, at the end of the day, what we have is we have a sliver. Two fully conforming lots plus the sliver.
It can't be maintained.
We're at the board's pleasure as to what the board would want us to do about it, but what the application this evening is for is to create, as of right, the two building lots. I would propose, as I know that Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Nagier had raised some questions in their respective review letters, I'd be happy to call, um, our expert, or our engineer, Ed Deck, to address any of the questions, uh, and whether there are any issues with applying to the end of the quest, or dealing with any questions in the board. Before I call Mr. Deck, I would just say, is there any questions at all as to what the issue is, as I laid it out?
It's very clear, it's very clear.
All right.
But I would just like to hear it from Kevin.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, should the tail be subdivided away from the now rectangular property? That would require a number of variances, as well as one that would know frontage on a public street.
That lot property.
And that's just the...
No limits.
I mean, you need a...
I don't know what, the board really can't do anything other than proceed with a two-lot subdivision. My guess is if and when that property owner in the back ever comes in before the board for variance of some kind, the board's first question will say, can you obtain further land to avoid a variance? We'll know what the answer is.
Well, you know what the answer is, if my client were still to own the property, sure, I of course cannot speak to a successor in title.
I understand.
But I would think that the successor in title is very little benefit I can see to anybody owning that sliver. Anyway. I, I agree with Mr. O'Brien's comments, uh, that's even better termed as, say, a ball load, that there would be a ball load of variances necessary for what is ultimately an in-style, uh, sliver plant.
Which would not be able to be heard by the board tonight, because they'll know this is not good.
So, from what I am understanding, they would rather give it away than maintain it.
Not even just that, that would be adverse, is it that? How do you even get on it to do it? I mean, as you start to get a point, I don't think you can fit my foot there. So if something was there and had to edge it or cut... So if somebody was there and had to edge it or cut it or treat it, how do they get on to do it without trespassing?
It's two and a half feet here for the most part. And so the option is maybe the town takes that portion back, no, never in a million years.
I think that's, you know, I think that's perhaps why, let's, if my client were represented at the time of the conveyance from the town, I would not have advised him to proceed in the manner in which he did. It was when after the conveyance had been made from the town to my client and I began to sit down to put together this new revised application and I actually began to look at meets and bounds that I said, wait a minute, Mr. Paparato, you didn't buy this, you bought this. And my client was surprised, but be that as it may, what would, what wouldn't we have, what could we have done differently? I don't know, because maybe the town would've said, we won't just convey you the part you need without sticking you with the tail.
Yeah, I don't think we can solve that. I think maybe if there's ever a new owner in the back, the law, the law will handle it, but right now it's just a two lot subdivision. And the tail remains.
Tail wagging, it needs to maintain.
Say, tail of two lots. I call Ed Deck.
I don't think it's up to us to worry about how he's gonna maintain those, you need to.
Could you raise your hand please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you state your names, by your last name?
Edward Villalnash, Leslie Jack, can you say it?
You've appeared before this board as an engineer many times and such, and that's why you're calling him as an engineer?
I'm an engineer.
And a surveyor, given that questioning now, it seems to be the surveying question as well.
Okay.
Matter of fact. My, Mr. Deck, you, you, first of all, you heard my preliminary comments with respect to problems as often provided for. Have I accurately uh set forth the situation as it sits there today?
Exactly, Mr. Redd.
And have I set, and have I set forth correctly for the record what the present situation is with respect to that tail and what the possible ways of dealing with it would be?
Yes, sure.
And the way that the subdivision is drawn leaves the tail pertinent to the left of the two lots, correct?
That's correct.
Are we to take forward through the uh surveying and engineering aspects of the application?
Sure. Uh, the plan sent as part of the board members is comprised of two sheets, uh, a minor subdivision of sixty-one Locust Drive, lot sixteen and eighteen lot ninety-six. On sheet one, we have a list of jury copy owners, a Q M, which shows the surrounding areas, including we have copies in Crawford. We have a pretty washed out, unfortunately, photograph of the site, which is possibly very little in the picture. And we have our zoning right in the right along with a zoning table. Uh, as you can see on the zoning table, uh, there are no, uh, priority zones that are required by uh the uh code subdivision. On sheet two, she gets shown both the existing and as opposed condition. On the right of sheet two, the existing condition is shown. Uh, there was a structure there, um, a while back, I believe, but now there's, or at one point there was a, a slab there, remnants of a garage. As you can see on the existing condition plan, we get lot sixteen, which is the large lot comprised of body extending fifty, I think seventy fifty square feet. And then we have lot eighteen, which uh fronts on uh Rogers and extends all the two zero dimension of Columbia Avenue.
All right, just a second, Mr. Deck, so you talked about ninety-seven hundred fifty square feet, so that would be the square footage of the parcel prior to the first purchase of the triangular piece from the town, correct?
That's correct.
And with the purchase of the triangular piece from the town, is there now enough square footage to create totally two fully conforming lots?
Yes, two fully conforming lots, the way we're proposing with the tail may also just for informational purposes, it would be conforming if we were to cut off the tail.
So actually the left side is a tad over, left side lots a tad over the sides, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, continue.
Uh, so um, on the right side of the plan is the subdivision shown and uh we make the right side of, what is lot sixteen? Call that lot sixteen oh one, it will be a direction fifty feet wide, front and back, and a hundred feet front and back on both sides, perfect rectangle. The lot proposed lot sixteen oh two, which is the lot on the left, is uh skewed on the southerly side or the Holland Avenue line, which is a channel with Crawford. So at the frontage, uh, with the opposed condition, uh, we have fifty-four point six seven feet. The rear line immediately to the west of, to the proposed structural location is forty-seven and a half feet. And if it's that long, then the property will continue in the western direction out to Columbia, and then come back down along the Holland, uh, township line to Crawford and Kenton. This short section here, although it's not an end lot sixteen, it's going to be part of the part tire, uh, lot sixteen oh two, is possibly fifty-two feet. At the widest point, at the point where the uh west yearly line of lot sixteen oh two, it was projected with the southern line.
Right, in terms of that, as we move further away from Locust Street, that narrows it up now.
That's correct, it was seven feet, two inches approximately at Locust, the public street in the rear, maybe therefore the percentage of this amount.
And just to say again, all, all requirements of the zone are met by the lots as proposed, correct?
Yes, um, sideburns setback are five feet, uh, either side for the zone. Uh, however, on lot sixteen oh two, because of the existing swale, we are proposing a ten foot wide green construction. Uh, so our sideburn setback would be uh extended five, it would be ten.
So what you're saying is that as to the right of the two lots, the building envelope would be that there's five feet on either side of that, correct?
That's correct.
But on the left of the two lots, although the zone requirement would be a five foot setback from the left side property line, because of the existence of the swale, you're saying that that house would be built at least ten feet off the left side property line, correct?
At least ten feet above, and remember this line is not perfectly, uh, perfectly in the front and rear, so it would be at least ten feet at its narrowest point.
I have no further, I'm sorry, because I'm, I'm.
No, no further questions, we're discussing uh comments, you know.
Well, I suspect the board has some questions.
Chairman, pardon me. Right now, this is a minor subdivision with two lots, that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
But I'm hearing testimony, what are we doing with the back piece?
I'm not doing anything as the application's point of view, it's so that lot sixteen oh two on the left side includes the tail.
Right.
And that is the application in point of view this evening.
I understand that, but I feel like I'm hearing more than that application, am I not? Are you hearing something different, am I hearing something different?
Variances with how proposed houses?
No, there are no variances required.
For the houses.
For the houses.
But we're not, houses are not subdivision. We're talking about a straight subdivision.
There's, there's, the board in the past has wanted to see the houses. So that's why I requested the document require Mr. Fraser and the applicant to give you the information on the houses so you would know what they look like, what kind of impact they would have on the neighborhood, and that's why in my report I asked questions about the houses.
That makes sense, okay.
That is not, you, you're not approving such houses, um, so if, because they are fine in this application.
Just if I could just address that for a second, I completely.
I understand, I.
No, I do, and I completely agree with, with Mr. O'Brien's comments, I mean, we tried and I appeared before this board, it must've been a while, many years ago, of course counseled this board, more years ago than I might even remember it. But we see the same thing in Garber, we're on, we're on the board turn. You come in with a fully conforming subdivision, the board basically has to give it to you as of right, but then they say, we wanna see what the houses are gonna look like. So what is, what does the developer do? The developer pulls out the stock plans from the last kind of like regular house uh development that he did and says, I'm gonna build something that looks like this. So that's what uh Mr. Paparato did here, and I saw that both Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Van Ager had some questions or concerns about the plans, frankly, that Mr. Paparato pulled off of his shelf and handed in, this one he built last time. Um, he's gonna build fully conforming houses that comply in all respects with the counterwork zoning ordinance, that comply in all respects with the building envelopes, and even beyond that, as Mr. Deck testified, it's the applicant's view, even if he's allowed to put that left house five feet off of, I guess that's what, the southerly property line? Five feet off the southerly property line, even the applicant would concur that it's appropriate that that house be ten feet off the southerly property line, and he's prepared to so commit. As far as the rest is concerned, when he goes for his building permits, uh, assuming that he ends up building both his houses, which is his present plan, but you don't always know the future, but when he goes for his building permits, he's gonna submit conforming requests. But we didn't wanna be difficult or obstructive, so we had to, we were asked for what are the houses gonna look like, we gave it.
Can I ask a question of the engineer? Sure, Ben. You want the site?
Yes.
Is there a fence on both sides of the property, alongside the tail?
Alongside the tail, we don't show the fence all the way out to Columbia.
Okay, so although by right, the applicant is to be maintaining it, but if there's no fence separating it from the Crawford residence, for the life of that Crawford residence, it's not gonna be like, oh, there's the tail, I'm not gonna mow it. I mean, there's no obstruction, is there an obstruction?
Well, excuse me, the, the, the Crawford residence may have a swell or that little brook, the intation. They, they get out, the person on Columbia lot one, I guess, directly behind them. Not only that, or, but they may, they may have that issue.
But it's accessible, so whether the swells, getting maintained or anything else, it's accessible.
Right.
So it will have its natural course of maintenance by somebody. I'm just suggesting that that might be, we all have situations, we all know blocks and our houses at times that things may or may not be maintained.
That's kinda why we thought they would want it, so, hell yeah, that would make sense, but sometimes some things don't make sense.
At the end of the day, the, the, the strip of land is going to and should be maintained by FDV, and that's pretty much how it goes. And if somebody else is going to mow the grass or cut it, maintain it, well, that's a plus. If not, at the end of the day, it needs to be maintained.
Except for one thing.
How do you get to it?
I mean, that skinny.
You know, I resemble every market. Drones, I, I just as much.
Remote control farmboers now. All right. Any more questions, Mr. Deck?
Uh, if, if you have more, go ahead. Just, uh, since we do have a swell, you're, you're, you're concerned about it, you as the applicant are concerned about it. Um, could we make part of this approval that, you know, we have pre and post um grading plans to make sure that, that, that swells aren't impacted or exist. So you're concerned, you're bringing that concern to us, so that's why I'm asking you if we could just make account of that now.
Right, in the uh, the G letter issued by Harborsol, I mean, I mean, I don't know, my client is willing to consent to that as a condition. So that's not fair to put that on Mr. Deck.
Get the shorter version. Anybody else have any questions, Chairman? For Mr. Deck? Okay. Chris?
Um, no questions for.
Anyone else have any, Mr. Fraser?
I have Mr. Paparato present if the board needs to hear from him. I don't really think that his testimony adds anything, but I also never like to come before court and not have a principal present so that we're not accused of hiding behind somebody. If the board has questions to Mr. Paparato, we could swear him and he can answer any questions you might have, but I don't have anything really that I need from him. I think it's a pretty clean, simple application.
Pretty clean and simple, I don't think we have any que, I, does the board have any questions for Mr. Paparato? No, we're, we're fine, just the way it is. Mr. Kevin?
To uh, Mr. Fraser, um, I did raise a number of concerns about those house models, such as there's no landings, there's no walkways, etc. As I said, the stock plan thing, you've explained that as a, yes. Does the board have any interest in discussing that or are we just gonna let that be a building to form an issue?
If there's nothing to look at except what he has, then we would pick apart that, and he's very clear that that's not probably what's going to be there, so I think it would be.
I, I will say this, Mr. Chairman. I, I will say, no, I will say this, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Paparato, I have discussed um both the uh letter and the intent of Mr. O'Brien's and Mr. Van Ager's letters. It is my client's intention, desire to comply fully with the um uh ordinances of Cavillworth. I even pointed out to Mr. Paparato myself, as I was looking at the plans, which I am not myself, I didn't have a copy of the building plans or the proposed, uh, what do you call, footprints or whatever, before I got here tonight, he wrote it, Mr. Deck saw this, he pointed it, so I'm looking at it, I said, so Mr. Paparato, wait a minute, this stuff's not footprint the size of this? And um, we're gonna be putting stuff in that's appropriate, that complies. We understand the anti-local light ordinance and all that kinda stuff, he's gonna build what is allowed.
And if, and if the plans come in and if it doesn't comply, I mean, common knowledge, you'd be directed to come to Congress for a variance, but.
Right.
We're not, we're not gonna do it so that there's a variance, whatever.
Well, as was stated before, right now, we're here to hear subdivision, right?
That's it.
And the fact that, you know, just making an observation, the fact that Mr. O'Brien asked for the Halloween plans, especially with the tail, as far as I'm concerned, tail's the tail, tail comes with, with, with property, it's, it's a conforming lot. The fact that we had the drainage concern, the drainage easement on the left side or south side of that one lot, the applicant showed that a house of conforming size can be fit on the property and not disturb anything. So it was good for us to see. So um, I agree with you that as far as picking apart the, the housing plans, the architectural plans now, they were just there, I hate to use the word suck, but they're just there to show us that a house can fit on a conforming lot.
Uh, I mean, in my opinion, Mr. O'Brien's defense, it is, it has not been uncommon to see the actual, the actual plans of the homes that are gonna be built on a subdivision, I can think of North Eighteenth Street where we subdivided into three lots, where the builder there provided very beautiful detailed um plans of what was gonna be built there. So it's not uncommon for this board to get that information.
Oh, right.
And get the actual structures that are gonna be built, not some cookie cutter plan, which quite frankly, the, the plans, in my opinion, are not very aesthetically pleasing as a normal type of home. Anyway, that's my opinion, which I'll provide. But again, in Mr. O'Brien's defense, to ask for that, I think is fair, so.
No, I, I, I agree with you, I wasn't trying to disagree, I was just stating that, you know, I think it was good on his part to uh ask for that, but it's really just a subdivision.
No, as far as the subdivision, that's, that's accurate.
So, so, Mr. Paparato?
The only, they have full control of the building that they wanna put in, unless this board wants to do something that's, I don't think that's, well, that's a legal question. Um, the only thing I'm concerned about at the end of this is that the way that these houses are arranged on, on the street, that we maximize street parking, also that we don't have these driveways set up in such a way that we're killing all the on-street parking out front. I mean, if you had the driveways like fifteen feet apart, all that space between is unusual. And how much would be left on either side of the, of the lot? To make sure that we maximize the amount of spaces there. And unfortunately, in this application, we have no mechanism to do that.
Nothing.
Mr. Brian, do you suggest me, and I don't see a problem with this, for a long time, would you suggest me that you would prefer that the driveways, for your two houses? are you suggesting that you would prefer that the driveways for your two houses be placed on the outside, if you will, of the two lot subdivision, to maximize the length of the, uh, interior, uh, forefront?
I've seen it both ways, Mr. Fraser, on the outside and on the inside, on the inside, there's potential separation uh, because of the five feet setback. Mr. Ryan, just sorry to interrupt, but we just did that on Michigan Avenue.
Yes.
Where there, again, another subdivision that came before this board, where we had that very situation, and they comply.
Yes.
And, and I don't see a problem with the point, what preference would be, if I understand you, either put the two driveways on the outside, put the two driveways on the inside, but don't smack it in the middle of each of the houses, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Fraser, if you, if you do that, if you, if you put them on either side of each other, you'll get about 40 feet in the middle. And, I know for a fact that the driveway on lot 15 is on the far right, so you'll have space.
Just what you're asking for.
So that's two cars on the street.
I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, you've got 20, you're 20.
And I think that maximizes the amount of on-street parking you're going to have.
Mr. Fraser, would you be opposed to putting that in as a condition, uh, going forward?
No problem at all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It's a good, it's a good suggestion, and I would defer.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Chris?
Obviously, uh, Stormwater.
Stormwater, so there's always.
So who would, if that's a condition, who would review that plan? Would that come to the board, would that go to the building for construction?
Well, can, can building, can, see, that's a.
Is that engineering condition that they need a road opening permit for their curb cuts, and then that would be picked up there?
If you've got it, then. If you flag into resolution, so they look for you.
Question, yeah?
Yeah, it was a road opening, yeah.
Yeah.
But he's looking for a trigger to say, Stormwater has been providing.
Yeah, but who's going to monitor that?
No problem.
You can either have it come back to our engineer, it's an engineer's sign.
If you're writing for the rez, you could.
Or.
Have it back there.
Okay, let's do that, let's, let's have that go back to engineering.
No, to engineering and planning.
We have the, the, oh, I thought you were going to say something, right. We have the, uh, driveways on either side.
Put that on engineering as well.
Put that on engineering as well.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we'll be maximizing parking on the street. And, uh, the tail wagging a dog has to be maintained somehow.
About remaintance.
You've got to draw them to mow.
Go with Lee.
Okay. Anything else?
I make a motion that we open the, uh, this application here into the public.
Sir.
Okay, uh, motion made by Mr. David, second by, by Mr. Shalke, all favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter only? Seeing none?
I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Sir.
Motion made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Shalke, all favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, it looks like we have, uh, motion, um, three conditions? Three conditions of Stormwater, placement of the driveways, and a pre-imposed grading.
That's to be reviewed by a juror.
To be reviewed by a juror. Okay. That's, so that implies we're about all these things, okay, normal, like normal, okay.
Okay.
Okay, with that, then I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion was approved by, uh, Mr. Bravavi, second by Mr. Pantina, roll call, please.
Mr. Reserna?
Yes.
Mr. Shalke?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Bravavi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mathieu?
Yes.
Mr. Wadawi?
Yes.
Mr. Pellelo?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. All right, any comments, uh, that is ready to board? Same, same with Mr. Johnson.
I make a motion to open, uh, the meeting to the public.
Sir.
Motion made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Shalke, all favor?
Aye.
Anyone in the public wishing to speak? What are you guys doing here?
For dinner for.
Took them the next month. I make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Sir.
Motion made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Shalke, all favor?
Aye.
Good night, goodbye.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir.
I thought that's what you just said, you have to, you have to close. Okay, made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Wadawi, and Mr. Shalke, all favor?
Aye.
Bye, everybody.